All right, let's call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury, Monday, June 2nd. Let's see, appointment of alternates today. One, two, three, four, five. So, I guess we'll let Mike participate in for... Who? Will. Yeah, for Will. All right, so, right?
Didn't Vaughn replace Will?
I am official.
He's official.
As of when? I'm not questioning, I just haven't seen.
Yeah, you know, I didn't see anything. If I called Greg Yates, who, because they were voting on it at their last meeting, he said it's official.
So what has to happen is it has to actually be approved?
And I already, I've already been sworn in.
Okay.
Friday I did that, yeah.
All right, so I apologize. So, I'm always the last one to know. But I knew it was in the works, but usually it has to be approved at the board of selectmen, so that happened, right?
Yeah. I only saw your resignation, didn't see the...
That's what I said. You're here?
I thought they were faking me out, getting my resignation. I asked you to come back.
Is this a sucker bet?
I ask that I show up.
This is a sucker bet?
Yeah.
All right, so apologize. So we have six, all six regular members here tonight. And Mike, you can participate as you always will going forward. So, all right, good. Approval of minutes. I looked through them, didn't have anything. Anybody see anything in the minutes that was noteworthy? All right, so we'll adopt the minutes as submitted. And tonight, we have three public hearings. And I'll read the call. The zoning commission of the town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing, a regular meeting to be held on Monday, June 2nd, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room, Simsbury Town Offices, Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut. On the following, application number 1425 of Marshall Epstein. Owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the Simsbury zoning regulations, for a temporary liquor permit for 2014 season of events to be held at Rosedale Farms and Vineyards at 25 East Wheaton Street, Simsbury, Connecticut. MAP H-14, Block 108, Lot 003, Zone R-40. And second is the application, the Simsbury zoning commission, for proposed revisions to Article 7, Section C dot 9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations regarding conditions of approval and requirements for accessory dwelling units in the town of Simsbury. Free copies of these applications are available at the Land Use Office, Simsbury Town Hall. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communication will be received. We held open the public hearing for application number 14 dash 22 of Paul J. Cochi? Kachi. Gosh, sorry, I apologize. Owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section C dot 9 of the Simsbury zoning regulations for an existing accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 46 Notch Road, MAP A-16, Block 503, Lot 002, Zone R-40. And so this is continued, and I suggest we start with that. So...
I've watched the video of that.
Okay. You're able and feel qualified?
And I did actually go and look at the facility, look at the property.
Okay. All right, and otherwise, I'm not sure who else was here.
I read the minutes, that's it. I didn't see the video.
Yeah, I just read the minutes.
All right.
I was here.
You were here, and Mike, were you seated? No. This was...
It was last week.
I think there was only, I think there was only five of us.
Okay. All right, so we'll, let's, if you have questions about things, and if in fact, we go back over ground that we went over before, I will intervene and give you my two cents worth, all right? All right. Hiram?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the, at the last meeting, I think there were a number of items that were, at least, open questions. I've talked with Mike Lynn, the code enforcement officer, with regard to this, this matter, as late as this afternoon. The application has essentially been brought into compliance with the regulations that exist right now for accessory dwelling units. However, there's a couple of things that need to be fixed prior to issuance of a CO. So the placement of the flood vents that need to be placed there is important prior to a CO. The elevation of the furnace, however, the elevation was corrected, and that is adequate, and does meet the current flood elevation requirements. So, staff recommendation at this point, unless the commission has other questions, is the application could be approved. However, the installation of the flood requirements need to be completed prior to the issuance of a CO for the unit.
That's a conservation commission requirement, or it's a...
It's an existing...
It's a zoning...
Existing structure.
Right.
They're satisfied.
Okay.
Excuse me. Mr. Williams told me to have no last name, saying I would do it, and it was passed.
Okay, I'm trying to get you there.
Oh, okay.
Relax.
All of this guy's lead.
So, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I think that as soon as those things are installed, then a CO could be issued. However, based upon representations that have been made to us, we're convinced that it meets the regulations as currently exist.
So we're still in a public hearing mode, and so if there's anyone from the public that's here to speak to this application? Seeing none? If there are questions from the commission, in the public hearing mode?
I don't want to waste any time, but what are flood vents? What exactly are the...
If the property floods, and it's in the flood zone, it allows flood waters to flow in and out without causing damage to the structure. So they're basically like louvers that...
Carrier? Oh, louvers, okay. I got you.
Okay. All right, so I'd be looking for a motion, then, to close the public hearing on this topic?
I move to close the public hearing on application 1422.
All right. And a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. All right, so we'll act on this in just a moment. All right. Okay. All right, let's move to our second public hearing, which is Marshall Epstein's application for a special exception. Marshall?
I think this is our sixth year.
You can just videotape this and send it to us every year.
Yeah. Well, we always try to do different things, and if you looked at last year, there was something from Mill Rights, but they weren't able to execute. So the first thing at events is Max Restaurant, so we've been doing that. This is our sixth year with them. Some festivals and some dinners, kind of a mixture of each one. Again, I think in the past, we have these dates, we had a couple rainouts, a couple thunderstorms, actually, I think we had one, two less than we, what we had scheduled for last year. And the only thing we added this year was what's called a food truck series. This is with, we're going to try to plan some food trucks. Those are very popular today. If somebody has seen the Big Cheese one from Casius, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly over in New Haven. Yeah, he's been noted the best Big Cheese, the best grilled cheese sandwich in America. He's a pretty good guy. He's done some things with us in the past, so. Some cheese trucks, some food trucks, Thomas Hooker beer, and that's why I'm here, because besides wine, and some music. So, we have a few dates on those. So that's what, pretty much what we're proposing for 2014.
How many dates total, Marshall?
Fourteen.
Fourteen dates?
Yeah.
And the dates are established, but we usually are very good about giving you flexibility on those dates?
Yeah, and last year, the only one, everything was pretty much scheduled and did that date, except for one, and we didn't reschedule.
Right. And we have, there have been no issues with the public or the police or, in any of these past years? That's good.
Occasionally, we've had someone say that somebody parked in the wrong place or pulled out of the wrong driveway, but they've been relatively minor corrected immediately. No issues?
All right.
Now, each of these has to have a public gathering permit?
We actually don't, we don't do that anymore, because we've left that to the police and the Parks and Rec Department. So if it requires alcohol, then we work with them to do that, but we work with Jerry Tonner to do that.
I'm not understanding your, do they or don't they?
Yes, they do. It's just that the responsibility for initiating that comes from Parks and Rec now, that's all.
Right.
Yep.
All right, and I remember last year, we torturously discussed the difference between the permit you have to sell your own wine versus beer, but again, this is, it's really, what we're doing is allowing you to bring in the beer and sell your wine.
Right, we have the permit, Farm Winery, so we can serve wine. Usually under Max's or Thomas Hooker, they have the key, they have a license to sell to do beer.
Okay, so we've done this in the past, hasn't been a problem. Any questions for Marshall relative to this? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this? Seeing no one?
Not many.
Looking for a motion to close the public hearing on this topic?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
See you there.
We'll pass on this shortly. Is it gotchi or gochi?
Cochi.
Huh?
Kachi.
Kachi. Gotchi. He left. All right. He left.
Did he leave, leave? Hiram, or did he just?
Huh?
Yes.
Did he get approval?
He's just assuming we're going to approve.
All right.
Because, and we, all we did was close the public hearing on that one, too.
And some people have mistaken that for approval in the past.
What are we doing here? What are we doing?
Okay. All right, so we also have a public hearing on the application for the zone change, and since there's no one here that is waiting for us to act on anything else, why don't we go ahead and do the public hearing while we're in that mode?
Okay.
Chairman, I think that you probably all had a chance to take a look at the staff's recommendation for the replacement of the existing Article 7, Section C 9 on accessory dwelling units. There were a couple of typos that were pointed out to me between the time this was drafted late one night and just recently, and I'd just like to point those out now to you. Under B 3, as occupancy of principal owner of the single-family dwelling must reside in either primary dwelling unit or in the accessory dwelling unit, rather than of. Apologize for that. In Section B 8, next to the last line in that paragraph, it should say Farmington Valley Health District. And in 9, just down below that, sort of in the middle of that paragraph, it should say, a principal owner shall also file with the Land Use Office, zoning commission, and affidavit in regard to such use. So those are the typos that need to be cleaned up. Just to let you know, the purpose of the regulation is to clean up some of the perhaps misconceptions, some of the things that were unclear in the old regulation, and to try to get them cleared up so that the commission could act effectively on these applications when they come in. There is one section that I received comment on between the time this notice was put out for a public hearing and tonight, and I'd just like to bring that to your attention as well. Under C, Section C, number 1, under standards, on page 3 of 3 that you have. This is really sort of the crux of what the commission looks at when considering the application, and it was suggested to me that standard number 1, the need for the proposed use in the proposed location, can occasionally cause some sort of problems. And so even though what the intent there, my intent was to clearly reference the purpose back in the very beginning under A, the suggestion was that the need, that is the proposed use, be in accordance with the requirements of the objectives, policies, and goals of the 2007 Plan of Conservation and Development. Just sort of restate that there, rather than to use the term need. The term need sometimes is a little bit confusing, and the suggestion that was made was that that be changed to reflect more directly the purpose that's in the purpose of the regulation. So, that's, that was their suggestion, and just wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, the rest of it's pretty straightforward, and I don't really have any other suggestions for you, if you have any questions, comments, or anything else. I would like to say, finally, though, that the planning commission looked at this the other night. They had a couple of questions with regard to definitions. They did not make a recommendation yet. So depending upon what the commission decides to do this evening, my suggestion would be that if we want to, even if you do decide how you want to go with this, if you want to postpone zoning on this, voting on this zoning regulation until your next meeting, that would be possible to let the planning commission have their input into the process, too. It's up to you.
I know that we have been talking about this for a long time, and that, how long has this been posted on the website?
Oh, February, since February.
And yet, there's no one here. There were, I expected, based on two or three of the open, public hearings we had on the Schoenhardt, and what was the other one that...
When would?
The two we declined on the same night, or denied on the same night. Both of them had a fair amount of neighborhood interest. And a couple of those people seemed interested, not just in that particular property, but also in the general tenor. So it's disappointing that we don't really get the public input we want, which leaves us to try to come to our own conclusion. You know, the, to me, I've said this on the record two or three times, that, you know, the third rail here is, or the issue that we don't resolve is, is, you know, the one you just talked about, Hiram, which is the need. And the need could be financial, as opposed to something more human interest related, like parental care or childcare, or finding a place for a child, or a brother, or a mother, or a sister to live. But as I said before, I don't see any clear way we could make a distinction based on the charging of rent that would be, solve this problem in a way that wouldn't create more problems than it solves, so.
Just for clarity, the standards under a special exception are different than that of what we're talking about here, correct?
Well, no, we're still...
Weren't those application, this is for a special exception?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, this is to change what we've been, each one of these that we've looked at would now come under these changes versus what we were operating on, and the changes are subtle. There really are not...
They're not across the board.
It does clean up the size restriction, some of those things, makes that a little less of a discussion at each meeting. But at the end of the day, I think our decisions really are going to come down to the character of the neighborhood and the overall purpose, and will be heavily influenced, I said this on the record before, by what the neighbors have to say about it, so.
If I recall correctly, in the great world of zoning, a big board of appeals, a financial hardship is not considered a legitimate hardship. So if they were, if someone was to go, for instance, to want to change some property because it's in their financial best interest, that's not considered a hardship.
And that's, that applies to the, to a variance application under the zoning board of appeals. This is a little different.
Well, and what I'm saying is, you know, the subject of a financial came up, and I just thought that that was close enough, you know, that it should be considered.
You can certainly literally take the word need to mean that I have a need, as Mr. Schoenhardt, I think, quite eloquently described, that he wants to stay in his home, it would be very helpful to him on a fixed income, to have some additional income there. And our regulations, as they exist today, or as modified hereby, don't really, don't address that as a reason for or against. But if the neighborhoods believe that this income property changes the character of the neighborhood, then I think we listen to that, and we say that that, you know, we use the, which, which number is it?
Number 3?
Number 3, which is the existing future general character of the neighborhood, as a reason to deny an application, and do so with authority to do that.
Yeah, I think in that particular situation, if all the neighbors showed up and they were all for it, they affected the decision.
Yeah, and it was mixed. There were a few people that were for it.
They were from the neighborhood.
They weren't neighbors.
Yeah.
They were friends of Mr. Schoenhardt, as I recall.
You're right.
Yeah, so you take that into care.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a bad thing. If you have friends that'll come say...
That's what I'm saying. You have to look at it on a larger scale, too. We don't want to be setting precedents for the rest of the town.
So I just want, I just wanted to have that be part of the discussion, because I'm not at all suggesting we make that change. I'm just saying that it'll, this change doesn't fix that question that will persist. David?
I have a concern about the occupancy requirement, and that is...
B 3?
Three, B 3.
Yeah.
And also the following certification thing. What do we do when the guy, well, for example, he decides he wants to become a resident of Florida, because it's better. So he lives there, one day less than half a year, lives in Florida as a resident of Florida for his 181 days a year. Nothing's changed. Is he in violation of this?
Yep.
That was my...
I would say yes, because you can't be a resident of both places, and, you know, the state of Connecticut cares a lot about it.
He's still paying his taxes here.
Doesn't matter.
Oh, he isn't.
He is.
He's paying income taxes.
Paying his real estate taxes. We're not, we're not, you know, DRS.
I thought of that same situation that Dave thought about today. I retire to Florida, I build an accessory apartment, I move into it, rent my whole 2,800 square foot house out now, and I live down in Florida, and I come back as a snowbird.
Yep.
And who's going to police when we're in and out, Dave? Nobody.
I don't know, and then...
So do you see where this could...
It's legit before you do that, okay? And in five years from now, you say, okay, I'm going to go do that, and I go south, and I continue to do that. What recourse do we have under this?
Well, all right, so just a couple comments on that. First of all, you are still acting in the spirit of what this says, because it's not two disinterested parties that are in the property. You could argue about whether you are or aren't, but you haven't rented out both sides of the building, because that would be a clear violation.
Right.
You know, two, if you are gone half the time, I would question how much it really changes the character of the house or the neighborhood and its use, if in fact, you've brought in somebody that's there when you're not there.
I don't think it's a problem. I'm not saying it's a problem.
No, I'm just saying, yeah.
Technically, now, the zoning enforcement officer goes down there and says, we need to do something. What is he going to do?
So, all right, so again, this is definitely a Rob Pomeroy view, but until the neighbors complain about the conduct that is somehow unacceptable to them, then nothing will happen, and that's probably all right.
But then what happens?
So what happens is, let's take the case of the one that we denied, where the, you know, the two pickup trucks and the two pit bulls are in the neighborhood, and people aren't happy, so you send out the enforcement officer, and you find out that in fact, the owner doesn't occupy it, because he's now technically a resident of the state of Florida, and you say you have to rectify this, and...
But he's, we've already given him permission. They already have the special exception.
But they're in, but they're in violation, they, at that point, once we determine that...
Now, that then goes to ZBA, right?
No, no, first, they go, it's a violation of the regulations, and so then, they have a certain amount of time to correct that, and they can correct it in a number of different ways. One is they can come back to Connecticut if they want to, but that's pretty drastic, they probably won't happen. Or they can remove the, remove the dwelling unit, and basically what that means is remove the kitchen, basically, because you need a kitchen to do that.
Right.
So if they remove the kitchen, then the other unit doesn't exist. They, again, if they choose not to do that, then it becomes a matter where we can actually impose a fine after a period of time, and those go on a daily basis. We just had one the other day, we just calculated a $39,000 fine. We'll see if we get it or not.
Doesn't that then go to ZBA?
No.
No. That's, it's a violation, it's not looking for a variance.
No, no, I thought ZBA got these zoning violations, and I thought that was the rules.
They go to court.
But what is the violation there? Because they could rent the house.
It says it must...
Have any, yeah, but they could, they could not occupy their part and rent the rest of the house and not be in any violation.
They couldn't rent the kitchen.
They couldn't have two rents, that's true.
They couldn't have two rents.
But they could leave their part, the accessory apartment, empty, and rent the rest of the house, and not be, and they would not be in any violation of anything.
As long as they weren't an official resident of Florida.
Right.
And we would have to determine that, whether it's through checking with the assessor.
But they're there for five months out of the year in town. Are they not residing in there?
No, I think for official, I think it has to be six months and a day.
But is that stipulated in our, in the state law, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
So...
And but who's going to police it?
Yeah, well, maybe it would just...
No, I, I'll go back to what I said. You know, you have the right of quiet enjoyment, and then once, once you violate that, then we have the power to do something about it, but we're not, this is not a police state, we're not out looking for violators and trying to impose fines.
But I think Ken's right. It's effectively not, he's not residing there, it's effectively empty.
Right. Right.
Under those circumstances, and so only one part is occupied and rented, and there's nothing wrong with that.
And it could be, and it could be the larger part.
Of course it could. Take your example. Sure.
And so, he's right, there's no, there's no problem there.
I actually had a question on B 3, Hiram, because, what it said, the way it's worded, it implies that you only have to make that affidavit at the time of the initial application, although it does say, a principal owner of the single-family dwelling unit must reside in either the primary dwelling unit or in the accessory dwelling unit, and said owner shall certify such residents to the zoning commission by affidavit at the time of initial application. Well, you know, the obligation to live there is perpetual, right? Now, we do say that somewhere else.
Under 9, we talked about continuation?
So there's a gap between when the time you make the certification and the rest of the time you live there before you sell it. You, you, we don't really say emphatically that the principal owner of the single-family dwelling must reside at all times in either the primary dwelling unit or...
So we should probably come up then with wording which talks about if the owners, if the property owner's status changes at any time, they should let it, they would be required to let us know. I can come up with better wording than that.
Right.
But, but words to that effect.
But there isn't any real need for that second sentence in 3, B 3. I mean, the occupancy requirement is stated in the first sentence, the second sentence is just...
The affidavit, that's just the how they represent.
How to do it, and we shouldn't be too worried about that.
Well, but, I mean, that goes back, Dave, to your other question about how, how do we, I mean, how do we keep track of these things at any way, at any way, at any time? I mean, we would want the person, we can say that they must reside there, but unless we say how that's going to be shown to us, or how that's going to be proven to us, what would you suggest that?
Well, he's going to be on the assessor's rolls for that.
Well, I would, I just would say that in the first sentence, we should make sure, make it crystal clear that it's an ongoing obligation, that he reside there, and that if that status changes, it's his obligation to report that to whoever they, the staff or the town, however you want that done.
Okay.
Well, for that, for the second sentence, rather than get rid of the whole second, can't you just get rid of it at the time of initial application? So they still have to do the affidavit?
Yeah, by affidavit.
Yeah, and then not specify that it's only at time of application.
Well, you want them to do the affidavit right away. I think that's what they're, that they...
Well, they're not going to get the permit if they don't make the affidavit.
Affidavit, right, but yeah, but at the time of application says, oh, the day afterwards, I can change.
Yeah, but if at any point we question that they're not there anymore, we could ask for an affidavit, and they could either do it or not. I think that's actually a pretty good fix. But I do think in the first sentence, we should say must reside at all times in...
Must continually reside.
Well, should it say reside or maintain a residency? Because residing and maintaining a residency could be...
Two different things.
Two different things, Hiram.
Well, let me, that's a good point, Jerry. Let me, I think that's another reason why if you put off voting on this until next time, I can run this wording by the town attorney.
Yeah, we're not going to vote on this.
Really good.
And see what, see what the affidavit actually says.
Yeah.
One other question, is there actual legal benchmark that they use here as far as calendar days for residency?
The state of Connecticut?
For the town of Simsbury or the state of Connecticut, is it six, is it six months?
I think it's six months and a day, I think.
If you live here six months and a day, then you pay Connecticut taxes, that's the deal.
Income tax.
Can you give me another example? What if you're in a nursing home for six months? Is that still residence?
Yes.
Okay.
And when you're overseas?
Yes.
You stay in the voting rules in that location, even if you sold the house.
Will you talk to Bob about that?
Good, I will.
So it's my understanding that all accessory dwelling unit applications come in under a special exception?
Correct.
Yes.
Even if it's new construction?
Yep.
And typically, we seem to be finding out about them when they sell the house to the new people as a two family house.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty common. What happens is, is, you know, usually the attorney that's doing the closing comes in and says, we want to see the permit for the accessory apartment. And they say, what accessory apartment?
So that would. That would require a new affidavit at the time of sale.
Well, it would require a permit to this commission, first of all.
Okay.
And then you could decide whether you wanted to approve it or not, certainly.
We had that lady from Hoskins, remember? She came in, she bought the house, they had to have an inspection and all of that.
Yeah. Yep.
Another question, on the mechanics of referencing the 2007 plan of conservation, I mean, every 10 years that should change and the zoning reg probably will last beyond the next conservation plan. So do, do we, is it okay to continue to reference the 2007 plan or do we incorporate that language into it?
It should say the current plan.
Or the most.
Oh, yeah, but what's not, if, what if it's not in the next one?
They'll just, they, they extend the plan as it, even if it expires, it just continues to be in place until they adopt a new plan. Right, Hiram?
So two, yeah, 2007 plan of conservation or the most recently adopted P O C D, something like that.
Yeah, because then you get to see two, also just says the plan of conservation, so it doesn't say which one.
Okay. Now, these are, these are all really good points to, to catch the holes that we've had, sir. Appreciate that. It seems like it ought to be as simple, but it's not. You know, there's, there's always those shades of gray which are tricky.
Can we actually get that housing section before we vote on it so we can actually see what it says?
You are a stickler.
I am a stickler.
It's on our website.
It's on the website, yeah.
There you go.
You actually carry it with you, see?
Yeah.
Still got his tattoo, too, from it.
Yeah, I earned it, you know that, Ira.
I probably asked this before, but how many of these do we have in San Diego?
Good question.
That we know of?
Good question, you know, I'll try to get that for you for the next meeting. We, I know we have some, I don't have an idea of the number, I know we've probably got probably twice that number that we don't know about.
Yeah.
That's my sense.
I mean, is it, is it unfair to say to the owner that it's an annual requirement to file a new affidavit?
Some towns do do that. I, I think that begins to get a little.
That's why I was figuring out how much, how many there were and how invasive that is, but.
I would suggest that not only is that difficult for the owners, I think that begins to become a real problem of keeping track.
Yeah.
If I can figure that out in the meantime, though, I'll, if it's only 50 or so, that's not a problem. If it's 200, then.
Maybe reassessment.
Can I say to do it for you?
I'm saying.
If we had a list.
Yeah, that could tell you what we.
You could send out a new application every year with their tax bill.
Yeah. I don't like that idea myself. I'll just say why, because, because some people will comply and some people won't and the people that don't will be negatively biased when they come in here and it just, not the kind of thing I'd want to take care of, frankly.
No, unless, nobody, unless a neighbor's complaining.
Yeah, that's really the essence of this, is.
Yeah, I mean, if they be, if they start to become real, real issues, and in general they haven't been terrible, so.
Is there a mechanism to revoke accessory dwelling if we run into a situation where the, you know, the property owner's not being cooperative, the resident that's living in a, accessory dwelling's a problem for the neighborhood? I mean, can you actually revoke?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that the way special permits work is that they stand with the property if there's no reason to revoke them. However, if they are then not in compliant with the conditions of the original permit, which is the reason these things need to be pretty clear, then we can go after them for violating the regulations.
Let me ask you that, I, I sympathize with some people that came in and did speak over a couple of different periods of time when they said, you know, I bought a house in a single family neighborhood and that's what I expected.
That's a compelling argument.
You know?
I, I agree.
And it's one thing if you've got to move your mother-in-law in or, you know, your kid come homes, comes home for college, but then all of a sudden it's a opportunity to make extra revenue and, you know what?
Character changes.
Yeah, really.
Right.
Yeah, the court, the courts have said, you know, you start to talk about housing issues, you get, you get really, can get really litigious pretty quickly. The basic difference between your son or daughter or not neighbor, whatever it is, sleeping on the couch or having an apartment is one thing. Whether that person's related to you or not, from a land use, pure land use standpoint, there's really no difference. You know, that's a person, is a person, is a person, and that's what the courts have held. And so that's why we have to be really careful about how we do that.
Yeah.
And that, that's why I think that's how the, the fact is that if you do need to rent it out to a, to a caregiver, I think that's what, what some people will probably do, or if they want to be able to stay in town, maybe they'll rent it out to somebody who can watch out for them, you know? Maybe it'd be a young person that may not be necessarily a nurse or something or a, or a doctor, but.
I think it's really going to be coming upon the neighbors to be aware of this and come to these meetings when they know this is going to.
Yep.
Come up and if it's going to affect their lifestyle in the neighborhood and be vocal about it one way or the other.
And they're, and they're notified as part of the process, so that's, that's one of the things that we have happened, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else we want to discuss? I, I would strongly suggest that we hold this public hearing open till the next meeting. Hopefully resolve some of this wording issue with feedback from town attorney with the goal of being able to vote on this in two weeks. All right, so we'll continue this public hearing. So having opened and closed or left open the public hearings, let's go back and do have discussion and action on the individual applications before us. The first is application 1422 of Paul, however he pronounces his last name.
Kachi.
Kachi. Kachi. And I guess I'll, I'll lead here, just say that we had a good discussion about this at the meeting two weeks ago. It's somewhat of a special circumstance in my mind, given the history of the property, the attempt to subdivide it, the issues around town rules changing while in the process of this. A little bit of a Shaggy Dog story, but I think that given the size of this property, this actually is a solution that works for everybody and doesn't really put any problems on any of the neighborhood because in fact it is a six acre property, it's a large piece of land, so generally in favor of doing this myself, so. Any other comments or questions?
Hiram, did he close the extra driveway? Is he going to be required to close that? Is he going to put a curb up? I saw that was one of the things that was mentioned in there, he had two driveways.
There was a lot of discussion about that. Apparently driveway's been in existence since 1996, so it's actually been there a long time. The way the regulation is worded and staff's interpretation of that is, is, my understanding is that no new driveway would be created, no new curb cuts would be created, so this was, from staff's opinion anyway, was acceptable.
Did, did the driveway have a separate entrance off the street? I thought it came off the other driveway. I'm looking at.
That's the way two drive.
I'm trying to remember.
No, he described.
There's two curb cuts.
There's two, there's two, sorry.
They're about 20 feet apart.
So the second one in 96 was an approved curb cut?
Yes. Well, as far as we know, it has been, it hasn't caused any problems, it doesn't create any sightline issues that we're aware of. We, we couldn't find anything that would say that should be taken out or removed or had anything to do with this application. I think as chairman.
It's a tough corner.
As chairman pointed out, I think that as the process changed, and I think frankly right now, I think the building department and coordination between our department and building is good, where perhaps in years past, that wasn't necessarily the case and things may have changed and things were a bit unclear.
We had periods of time where we didn't have staff either.
Yep.
You know, especially in the building.
I'd like to think that clears up all the problems, but I know that that's not always the case either, so.
Agree more.
Apologize for that.
Yeah, a lot of stuff gets done when there's nobody looking.
Yeah. All right.
Well, as I say, except for the, for the flood vent issues, it needed corrected prior to CEO, staff recommends.
So be looking for a motion for approval.
I move we accept application 1422.
With, with the staff's recommendation of the inclusion of the flood vents.
Prior to CEO, yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, so that passes. All right, second, application 1425 of Marshall Epstein. Again, I think I applaud Marshall, what he's done with his property and it's a valuable add to the hopes of the town. If you've never been to a food truck gathering, it's really quite a happening, actually. Be excited about that, so.
Scratch and pasties are really good.
Yeah.
These are, like roach oches?
That's an old term for.
Yes. They're hot stuff.
They really, places like Seattle, it's going crazy out there. You get some really fine food out of some of these places, it's amazing.
And it really draws a crowd, so.
Well, in order to make a deadline, I will make the motion that we approve application 1425.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Post, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would take no action on the zone regulations. I would want to make another item that's not on here, which is that with Will Fitz's resignation, we do need to appoint a secretary permanently. I would nominate Derek for that. Anyone else that's interested, they can take other nominations.
Can we see your hand ready?
Hand ready?
Yeah.
I'm lefty, I don't know.
Oh.
Put that on the next agenda for official vote, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have to do it or?
I think it should be on the agenda.
Okay, it goes for 30 days or something like that, right?
Does it take that long?
Is it?
No, at the next meeting, but.
It gives you what to make in the meantime.
Okay, so I, I, I strongly recommend we do that.
We are making a temporary secretary.
All right, so we will appoint a temporary secretary in the interim. All in favor, say aye. Dave seconded that, so. Thank you, Dave. All right. Robert's rules of order. And that gives us a full three minutes for updates on other items.
The next meeting, Mr. Chairman, June 16th, I believe it is, will be at the library with hopefully all the other land use commissioners to talk about the code for, new code for the 200 High Meadow Street, the Hartford property. If you get a chance to take a look at it in the meantime, any questions, comments, whatever, just let me know.
How much did we pay for this?
The total thing is $175,000.
And how much did the town pay versus?
$30,000.
So the Hartford paid the $100,000.
$145,000, yeah.
All right, sorry, what was the date of that?
The 16th of June.
Yeah, two weeks.
We'll be at the program room, go ahead, program and elaborate. Gateway will be here to present it, explain to you what, what they've done and not terribly long and hopefully answer any questions you might have.
I have one other item. Dan?
No, I was just going to ask Hiram about the status of the sales effort for the property.
Actually, we have a Hartford Land Use Study Committee meeting coming up tomorrow night, right here at 5:00. We'll hear from CBRE, the real estate people then, to find out if they have any new leads for us or not. I have had a number of people call me and ask me various questions. I can't tell you that I've, that I know that they're going to come and buy it, but they're very anxious to find out when this gets passed and CBRE hopefully will tell us what they've had in terms of activity on the property. So that's, that's as much as I know right now, Dave.
Okay, I just wanted to have a, a brief discussion about the informal presentation we had two weeks ago about the CLMP property. I did receive some correspondence from one of the citizens that was founder of Share and, you know, I think generally was positive relative to the property, but we should, you know, certainly be aware that there are people, you know, that were very vocal about the River Oaks project and will take a keen interest in this, so I just ask that all of us pay a lot of attention. They did raise one question, which I would like, maybe you can help me with an answer. I don't think it requires that we give them a written answer, but the, is the PAD that they're talking about for the entire property including the CLMP piece?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
And so the concern is that we grant the PAD's status and then six months, a year from now, they buy out CLMP's lease and they put in Target.
They would have to come back.
Yeah. So even though the building would be of the same footprint, the footprint of the CLMP building is large, right? Larger than even some of those big box stores that people fear, but I, these are the kind of talking points and understanding. And it was my understanding that the site plan would only be for the CLMP building as it exists and that if they wanted to do something different, that would require a site plan amendment, which would have to then come to the zoning commission and be approved.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, and in fact, that's, that's a good word, amount of wording to put in such a decision. If you did decide to approve something like that, just to be clear on things like that, it's brought up during the hearing, that's a concern, that's not a problem.
Probably debating below 10 stories.
Yeah, exactly.
Or however you want to word it. Yes, they would have to come back for changes to.
I'll also mention that some of the discussion around the importance of the plan of conservation and, and the, some of the applicable standards in there, we need to be very aware that those are the, if not the law of our land, is certainly the strong indication of where we want to be and so as, well, the zoning commission and our design review board that advises us, we want to be aware that these guidelines and sightlines and things matter to citizens of the town, be respectful of that, so.
I would also say too, one of the important things about informal discussions is that while the applicant can change the application when they come back for their formal application, commission is no obligation to stick to what your opinion was at that time either if the application's changed, so just to be really clear that, that, that process is only as good as, as the effort and integrity people put into it. If you're asked to look at one thing and you think it's okay and then they come back with something totally different, certainly not, would surprise, would not surprise me if you have every, every right once I change your mind, so.
It strikes me how similar, how strikingly similar these two pieces of property are designed to be, Hartford and CLMP.
I tried to talk, four years ago, I tried to talk the owner of the Northeast Utilities property into doing something like this for their properties so that people could understand what it would look like ultimately. They did not want to fund that effort at that time, which is understandable, but I think it sort of takes...
Well, we didn't have a PAD at that time either, although it was in process.
But it certainly takes the pain out of the process going forward, so...
Yeah. All right. Now, I'm comfortably two minutes ahead of my, of my, anything else for the good of the commission?
I'm still concerned, and I've had other people express a concern to me, that most of the PAD and development activity that we've seen recently has resulted in a great number of apartment applications, and that people are concerned that it's getting out of hand, and I know, Hiram, was thinking about that, but I don't have comfort in what I've heard. The market is very strong for apartments at this point, but that ain't always going to be so, I don't think. And I'd like to know kind of where we are in terms of total number of units coming on stream over what we had for some period of time, so that we can make decisions that are...
Maybe you could do that for us, Hiram, and, you know, just, you know, start with Ritson's property, which I don't believe is completely leased. I know that the Griss Mill is largely leased, right?
This department, I'd be...
Yeah. So, so then they would include the one at, up at Dorset Crossing, big project, the big project in Outer Forest.
Outer Forest, yeah.
Yeah. And then these proposed units...
If you could break it down between owner and rentals, I'd like to see that, because this, this discussion came up in that presentation, because they were recommending all rentals. Am I correct?
Which one? At which property?
The CLMP property.
Yeah.
That topic came up, the discussion was, they weren't recommending any condos.
Condos, yeah.
All rental properties. And I, I think I may have commented on it as well, so...
But I had brought that up at the power source.
Yeah.
And I said, are you guys talking to each other? Because at what point do you overbuild? And he said, oh, no, we're constantly monitoring the market. He said, that's why we stage in our developments, so, you know, whether the EB people are right or not, and they're developers, I don't know. I brought this...
Well, the last guy to build is probably going to have some issues, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Dave, you, were you, were you at the informal presentation? Yeah, but there, I mean, there were a lot of questions about that, including questions from me about the turnover and the uptake of the number of units, you know, according to their market studies, we're still at a, even with all of this properties, we're at a fraction of what they believe is real, and it does sort of give you pause and say, well, you know, that's, I mean, we're talking about 300 or 400 units that are being built, right? Is that what, that's off the top of my head? Have I added all of those up?
Probably not.
And then you add the single-family housing in Carson Way, which is another...
74.
70, I was going to say 80 units. I, I don't personally subscribe to the, we're going to have to build a new school theory because of the, I don't, I don't think that's the issue, it's the empty parking lot, the empty building, we can't lease this at any price kind of problem, and we really don't want to find ourselves in.
Typically, what happens is, if the apartments don't rent, the maintenance of the building usually suffers, and then, you know, you, we end up with more stuff on the blight, and the management companies that aren't responsive. So, I think, you know, we, you have to keep an eye on it, and make sure that they don't overbuild.
Just recently did something too, I worked with a town engineer, and he put together a letter for the first election, actually, in terms of how much land's available for commercial or industrial development, as opposed to, that is vacant land. So, I have that number, that information too, and I'll, I'll work that into the analysis for you, get that to you.
I think we killed off all the industrial land, didn't we?
No, there's, there's a lot left.
Really?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, just to, so, just in case you're interested in the Griffin land people want to come in and talk to the Economic Development Commission at their next meeting on June 12th, about future possibilities of development on their properties, in the, primarily the north end, so, they have no, no, not give me any indication of specific plans that they have, they just want to talk to them about it, so, so that's where they're starting informally anyway, so just to let you know.
Maybe that road would get built.
Yeah.
Could they, connect the road from the airport to the one that goes out to...
Yeah, they're talking about the property, they're talking about the housing property, or their...
I honestly don't...
They own the property in between, the standing place.
That road that ran through Dorset Crossing, through the backside of Dorset Crossing there, actually. The specialty needs housing up at Dorset Crossing is getting ready to go underway, so the ribbon cutting will be here shortly as well, so, see what happens.
Can we talk just briefly about these blighted properties? There's a lot of them, right? This is only a fraction of them that are in this area.
That's correct. There's about 132 right now.
Whoa.
You got as less closure...
Well, they're not blighted, I should say, I should say, take it back, properties that are in some process of foreclosure. The difficult part of that whole process is that, that's about a three-year process, so from the time they start that, to the time somebody actually changes, changes hands, it's about three years, so we can follow it through as much as we can. We're starting to get properties now that the grass is starting to grow again, so the neighbors are calling, saying, you know, we need to get this taken care of, so we're trying to contact them, and either they're going to do it, or we're going to do it, and they lean the property, so...
So, like the house on the corner of Pike Hill and Wyre Town Road, it doesn't, it doesn't look like anything's happened there in six, seven years. You know, the house I'm talking about?
Yeah, they just cut some trees down, a few of the, yeah, but, some structure of the property, yeah, boarded up some windows.
What can the town, the home sweet home, the question is, what, the town has a very small budget to do something on these, and then they can charge it back to the owner, but those owners are deadbeats, they're, these houses are owned by the banks?
In a lot of cases, they are, and trying to get ahold of the bank is challenging sometimes as well.
They're real good at collecting money.
It'll be a long time before, we always have to front the money, whether it's for maintenance, or to board it up, or whatever. We had the problem where we had to board up one a year or so ago, it cost us $5,000,